Please keep some people in your thoughts and prayers. Continue to pray for, of course, Sherri Cannon, our city clerk, for her husband Rex. Rex is back in the hospital and was in intensive care, but I think he has come out of intensive care. Seems to be doing a little better, but I think they had a really tough weekend. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers, and we hope things will keep going, going well. We welcome council member, one-legged ain't like Perkins, back to the council tonight, and he is, seems to be doing well.
It's one of his legs.
But we're glad to have Councilmember Perkins.
Welcome back.
Councilmember Perkins back with us tonight, and we're glad that you're doing, doing well with that. We have several council members traveling, so please keep them in your thoughts as they are traveling on vacation, and our city attorney also is traveling, so I hope we have no legal problems tonight. We hope we'll be all right. So anyway, we have several, several, even our staffers traveling also, so keep everyone in your thoughts and prayers as they, as they continue to travel. If you will, please join us for our moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move on our agenda. We do not have any matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to consent agenda items, which consist tonight of minutes from our committee, the whole meeting on Tuesday, April 24th, minutes from our city council meeting of Tuesday, May 1st, 2018. We have item C, which is an acceptance of an offer to purchase real property. This is for 533 Hill Street. The recommendation is to accept an offer to purchase this property in the amount of $250 as submitted by Mr. Ron Walker for property located at 533 Hill Street. That's North Carolina PIN number 274-957-2991. And we do note this legal, the legal advertisement for the notice of offer to purchase real property will be published in the news topic, starting a 10-day upset bid period as required by the North Carolina General Statute 168-269, following the council's acceptance of the offer to purchase. And item D is the acceptance of an offer to purchase real property. This is 533A Hill Street. Recommendation to accept an offer to purchase this real property in the amount of $250 as submitted by Mr. Ron Walker for property located at 533A Hill Street, North Carolina PIN number 274-957-3826. And again, the same legal advertisement for the, the notice of offer to purchase real property will be published in the news topic, starting a 10-day upset bid period as required by North Carolina General Statutes 168-269, following council's acceptance of the offer to purchase. That is the consent agenda items, A through D. I will open up if there's any discussion concerning that.
Make a motion, we approve consent agenda items as presented.
I have a motion for Mayor Protim Willis to accept the consent agenda items, A through D, as presented. No one else's discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. You carries unanimously, which is five-zero tonight. Okay, thank you. We'll move on then. Requests of, and petitions of any citizens. I see most everyone is our staff that's here with us tonight, so unless anyone else has something to add, we're gonna hear from Rick in a few minutes.
Right now.
Right now. All right. We have no reports of our boards and commissions, but we do have a report from Mr. Rick Oxford, our plan administrator of the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. Will be holding the second of two public meetings to receive public comments regarding the proposed FY 2018 action plan of the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium as part of the five-year consolidated plan. This plan is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and I'll let you go ahead from there. How about that?
All right, thank you. We, we had a, our first public hearing was in March the 20th, and then this will be our second. And the first one, I did not have budgetary numbers, but I do now. The CDBG program for the City of Lenore will be funded with FY 2018, a total of $137,666. And after conferring with the town manager and staff, what the city would like to do with that is, we'd like to put $110,133 in the public facilities line item, and that would be for the construction of a section of Greenway from Main Street through West End to Harper Avenue. We already have some funds budgeted there currently, and this money will be used for design, survey, engineering, construction, crosswalks, paving, signage for neighborhood, and signage for Greenway. The balance of that, which represents 20% of the total funds, is set aside for program administration, and that is $27,533. And those funds are used to provide efficient and timely administrative services, also staff, city staff, and my services. Okay? Any, any questions about that?
We have to pay for that or something.
Oh, yeah.
Just to write one.
We can get TJ to.
My friend, my friend TJ is not here today. He wanted me to say something about, I can't remember what it was, but I'm sure he's in favor of this.
I can tell you probably what it is. I'm sure he has a vote for it, yeah.
You'll have to deal with that when he gets back, by the way.
I can't remember which way he said it.
Anyhow, that, that is the City of Lenore CDBG budget and proposed activities. And the City of Lenore serves as the lead entity for a four-county-wide, and that would be Alexander Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba County, and all the 28 local governments that comprise those four counties. City of Lenore serves as the lead entity for the home program. It's called the Uniform Consortium Home Program, and the city receives funding for that program through HUD each year, just like the CDBG. And this year, the funding amount from HUD is up. Both, both years, both programs were up, CDBG and the home program. Home program this year will receive $1,152,451. We're also anticipating program income of $300,000 this year, for a total of $1.4 million. And that program income comes to us as we do down payment assistance loans to first-time home buyers. They trigger repayment if and when they sell, refinance, or otherwise transfer the property. Typically, our loans are $5,000. If they keep the loan 10 years, we'll forgive half of it. But, so if they, if they sell in the first 10 years, they owe us back $5,000. If they sell after the 10th year, they owe us back $2,500. We also make loans to multifamily housing developers, and they pay us back those loans over a 20-year term. So with that, our activities proposed are the regional down payment assistance program. We propose $500,338 to go to that. And with that, we are in, hope to do 87 homes, 87 down payment assistance. We're required to set aside 15% of our total budget, or our total funding, for CHODOs, Community Housing Development Organizations. And those are nonprofit organizations throughout the four counties that are doing housing-related activities. And in the past few years, those entities that we've funded have been the four habitats, the habitats in each of the four counties. We've tried to do some other activities, but they don't quite fit the, the mold that HUD is looking for. We, we did some activities in Hickory, and it was, HUD thought it was a homeless shelter. So, and they made us change the contracts with, with, as a family care center. We'd given them some money, and they said, well, if someone shows up with drunk or with drugs, they could kick them out, and they didn't have a year lease, and HUD wanted a year lease, and they wanted them to have all the rights, you know, through the courts for eviction. So after that, we quit funding organizations like that, because we sort of got in trouble with HUD a little bit. So anyhow, the CHODOs, we, we plan on funding them $172,868, and we imagine that will fund, we can fund all four habitats. And what they do with those funds is they use them to construct a habitat home, or homes. And we're anticipating with that, they can produce six homes. Our multifamily housing line item, we're proposing $664,000, and that money will be used for one, two, three multifamily housing projects. And what that is, is it would be a low-interest loan to those multifamily housing developers as part of their overall package. Typically, those packages are seven, eight million dollar projects. So what we provide them is a 200 or a $300,000 low-interest loan, and they pay that back over a 20-year term. And the 10% of the program can go for administration, and that's $115,245. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The monies that you say that you provide or that you shift to Habitat for Humanity for the construction of a house, naturally, those are for low-income houses, correct?
Yes.
How much of the monies, or maybe this is different from what HUD would give, or what HUD would provide for a low-income? Are those two separate entities? Humanity, Houses for Humanity, you provide so much, and HUD provides so much for a low-income? What is the difference there between Habitat for Humanity, Low Income, and HUD?
Well, they, they use the same guidelines. Habitat for Humanity uses the same guidelines. The funds that we provide are typically, I don't know, about $30,000 toward the production of a house, and then the balance of it comes from Habitat's own funds.
So in that, is there?
As far as I know, there's no other HUD monies involved.
Is there criteria, or is there a limit, or a financial amount of money that a low-income person would have to make that would qualify them? Or, are there areas where, trying to ask, where there are property values come into play? Are there places where you say, well, the property value in this neighborhood is too high for us to build a Habitat or a HUD? Is there such cases as that, or?
Not that I know of. Habitat, they select their own properties, and typically, they, they used to do little spot, a house here, and a house there, and a house there. But now, they do them in sort of clusters, and everyone that, to qualify for the program, to Habitat, and for my program, you have to be at least, your total household income has to be below 80% of the area median income. And I believe for Habitat, it's even lower than that. I think it might be below 60% of the area median income. But, you know, they have to have enough income to be able to support a house payment, you know? But Habitat does the qualifying on that end, as far as, you know, the credit scores and their ability to repay the loan. We're funding Habitat program. Did that answer your question?
I'm satisfied. All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, yeah. If, I would like to meet with the mayor, maybe tomorrow, and get him to sign some papers, and so I would like approval to be able to submit this action plan to HUD as soon as possible.
Okay. Okay. So we, we, what we need to do is approve the action plan.
If you could, yes.
Okay, council, you've heard that. We need a motion then to approve the action plan for FY 2018 for the City of Lenore and the Uniform Home Consortium. And our C, C, CDBG.
Community Development.
What was the budget on the CDBG?
137.
137, 666.
137, 666.
Okay, thank you.
Play your motion to accept this.
So move?
Motion from Mayor Protim Willis to accept the action plan as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Okay. We have four to one then, on that. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Rick. We appreciate that. All right, we'll move on then to report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, council, several items tonight for your information. This evening, we have the Peace Officers Memorial Day. It's going to be observed at 7:00 p.m. at First Baptist Church. Again, that's at 7 o'clock this evening. City council will be having a budget work session on Thursday, May 17th, at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall, third floor. The City of Lenore will observe National Public Works Week on Sunday, May 20th through Saturday, May 26th. The Committee of the Whole will meet on Tuesday, May 22nd, 8:30 a.m., third floor, City Hall. City council may have a work session on Thursday, May 24th at 6, and that's just if necessary. Memorial Day Weekend Gospel Singing Event will be held on Saturday, May 26th at 4:00, and that's at the MLK Center. The Aquatic and Fitness Center's outdoor pool will open on Saturday, May 26th. City officers are closed on Monday, May 28th, in absence of service of Memorial Day. The American Legion will be hosting a Memorial Day service on Monday, May 28th at 10 a.m., and that's going to be at the Veterans Plaza on the square in downtown Lenore. The North Carolina Rural Center will be hosting Rural Day on Tuesday, May 29th, beginning at 9 a.m., and that's going to be held at the North Carolina Museum of History in Raleigh. The city has several folks attending, including Mayor Gibbons, Mayor Protim Willis, City Manager Hildebrand, councilmembers Purdue and Thomas. Also, that evening will be the North Carolina League of Municipalities Town and State Dinner. And then the, I think the next item's the same thing, so. And the next I have for you is a presentation of the FY 1819 budget. So if you give me a second, I'll get that.
Always doing that. Anybody have any questions about anything on the list of that? Anything else update, do we know on that's going on? Chair, is there a breakfast for the?
Yes. Public Works Breakfast is scheduled for May 23rd, that's next Wednesday, beginning at 7:30.
7:30.
That's at 18:30 schedule.
Okay. Everybody put that on their calendar. It'll be, uh, May 23rd, Public Works Breakfast, appreciation breakfast for the week, at the 1841 Cafe at 7:30.
I'll wait just a minute till you get your copies of the budget and also the PowerPoint slides. You've been emailing those documents as well, just prior to the meeting.
7:30.
Everybody have their copies?
Yes.
Okay, I'll begin. Pursuant to Section 15911 of the North Carolina General Statutes, I'm pleased to present with, to you tonight, the 2018-19 budget for your review and consideration. This document was prepared based on our strategic planning retreat in February, as well as our budget retreat in March, and with discussions we've had throughout the year about your priorities. With that, we're going to start with the general fund. General fund total, $17,093,111. The budget's balanced, and again, it addresses your goals, as you set out in your planning retreats. There's no tax rate increase. The tax rate will remain at 58 cent per 100. It also includes a rescue readiness tax that we did this previous year, which is .85 of a cent per 100. All other general fund fees and charges are unchanged. There's a pie chart of the budget. You see, police department makes up the largest percentage of the budget, 32%. Fire, 22. Recreation, 10. Public Works, 24. Legislative, 2. Admin, 4. Finance, 4. Planning, 3. Just kind of giving you in graphic detail of how the money's spent. The water and wastewater fund will be totaled $8,890,000. That fund, we're only having a 1.5% water rate increase. We discussed that back several weeks ago, when you adopted that during our work session. That increase equates to 35 cent more per month for an average water bill. All other water and wastewater fees and charges are unchanged. The water fund, where the money goes? The majority of it goes to the water. It goes to the treatment plant out at Lake Roadhis, water distribution. Next comes wastewater collection, your wastewater plants, both at Gunpowder and Lower Creek, maintenance, engineering, and you've got pretreatment. Highlights of your budget, our core services are continued at adequate levels. Our priority still remains service beyond measure. That's our number-one goal. We try to perform each and every day, and your employees try to, I guess, try to achieve that each and every day. Your number-one priority from the budget retreat we had, and strategic planning retreat, was employee compensation. This budget includes a 4.8% cost-of-living increase going into effect January of 2019. Part of that was able to accomplish that. The CPI for this year, through March, was 2.3%. So this is 2.5% more than the Consumer Price Index for this period. Health plan change. We looked at vendors this year and looking to change vendors. With that, we have a 5% decrease in our premium expenses for current year. If we include next year, what was proposed by our current vendor, it'd been 11% difference. So with that, we're able to go back and, and put the money back into our employees, which I think they will greatly appreciate. Other highlights, $375,000 for street paving, funding for fire station number three, we hope. Sorry about that. Funding, continue to move Lenore to the second floor and downtown development. We have funding to complete improvements at J. Hipper Hill Park, which we hope will be done July 1st. Is that correct, Mr. Story? Also, our rail trail conversion, some of the things that Rick mentioned earlier. Funding for the final phase of Leaking Side Connector, if that goes forward. The budget does not include any use of fund balance. Current, we have a 43% fund balance, which exceeds our goal of 24%, and we'll come back to you at some point, probably with some capital projects that we can go one-time expenses for you to consider with that. We have $75,000 for sidewalk screen raising trails, $24,000 for code enforcement building demolition, which is similar to what we had this past year. We fund computer and IT upgrades, security improvements at City Hall. We have funding for Field South Plan, including the EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant we rewarded a week or so ago, that we'll talk more about probably Committee of the Whole next week. It also funds all our debt obligations. Some of the highlights of what we're funding in the general fund includes five patrol cars, totally outfitted, or outfitted, two detective cars, Viper radios for the fire department, some first-floor City Hall updates, replacement doors at the aquatic center, a cemetery mower, a used bucket truck for public works. Some of the highlights in water and sewer include our final payment on the US 321 Conley Springs Road utility relocation with DOT, grit system improvements, evactor dump station, biosolids improvements, raw water pumps, seven miscellaneous trucks, SUV vans for the water and wastewater operation, SCADA equipment, and implementation of the automated metering equipment we talked about at the work session a few weeks ago, I guess probably a month ago. I'd like to, that's the highlights. Thank you to Donna Bean. Donna spent a lot of time on this document. She's been very instrumental in putting it together. Her thoroughness has been excellent, and I think you'll see that as we go through it Thursday night. The department directors, all this is done with a team. This budget does not fund everything we need. It doesn't. It probably never will. But we had to go back and prioritize those things, and I think that the department directors working together know that, and they're willing to give up something to help someone else, knowing that in return, they'll get that back at a future date. And Team Lenore, that's our whole concept. We try to do everything together, and I appreciate City Council and your guidance in this document preparation as well. The last thing I'll mention again, as we talked about earlier, is that we have a work session scheduled for Thursday night at 6:00, to go back and dive into this. And then also, if we don't get through Thursday night, we'll continue it at the Committee of the Whole meeting next week. The public hearing is scheduled for June 5th at 6:00 p.m., and with that, I'll take questions, or you want to dive into it, or we can wait till Thursday. That's, I'll leave that to you.
Okay. Council, any questions to Mr. Hildebrand, or any of the staff, department heads here?
I know I was very brief with that, but I know you want to dive into it and read it.
Yeah, no, I think at first glance, this is exactly what we've come to accept, you know, expect from such a great, a great team. So I look forward to going into a little bit more detail and seeing what we got to, to go for.
Mr. Manager, on the, the street paving, the $375,000 that's in the budget, how many miles will that do?
Depending on the unit price of asphalt, typically ranges from $110 to $120 per linear mile.
And with that, this, this past year, we did some strategic pavings, like North Main was outside of that number.
Right.
We've got some other plans ahead for Hospital Avenue, once the sidewalk construction's complete, looking at Mulberry Street in front of the hospital, once all that construction's complete. We've talked about Green Haven and Finley coming in that way as well. So those are some of the priority streets we're aware of. We're trying to find additional funds to cover those as the projects get complete. We don't want to, of course, pave Mulberry while the hospital's being constructed, but we've.
On our, on our per ton price on the asphalt, how good's that, how long is that estimate good for that we've got to under contract?
Our contract is, is going to be repaid this year. So starting in FY 1819, we'll have a new two-year contract. That contract, for whomever that successful bidder may be, does include an escalator clause that's based on the monthly liquid asphalt index, which does come out first of each month. You have small adjustments in that asphalt price per month, won't be reflected or won't cause an increase in our unit price. Large adjustments, like we've seen over the past several months, and we can see that with prices at the pump, because it's all derivatives of.
For this summer, I.
Right, petroleum.
So it may be going up 30 cents.
Right. In this case, in this fiscal year, we did see a $6 per ton increase. It went, well, five and a half. It went from $82.50 to $88 per ton. So I would expect, over the course of the contract being two years, to see some adjustment in that unit price. Now, hopefully, it's no more than $10 or $15 a ton, but again, that's, that's gnawing away at the amount you're going to be able to pave if you're paying 125% of your original unit cost.
As you're aware, this current budget included a pavement study, and we use that study now to go back and pave. So all the paving we've done, I guess, so far this spring, has been based on that pavement study, and we'll pick right back up with the study.
Was that a new study?
Correct. Every, every street was evaluated, every intersection, and that's what we're using as a guide.
Right.
So takes the politics out of the.
It's always good. It's always good to know. I've explained that probably to a whole lot of people with the last little bit of that. Why can't we all pave this? Well, you know, if I, I live on Norwood Street. If we pave Norwood Street, I'm going to get chewed out, I can tell you that.
Well, I've just been pleased at how many different paving projects I've seen all around town, so it looks like something's happening.
Lot, lot of people are noticed. Lot of good comments from it, too. That's good. And we did fix Powell Road. You know, that was a lot of comments, of course.
North Main.
And North Main was a good, a lot of comments, too. Any other questions, Mr. Hildebrand? Let me say thank you all, to all of y'all, for all your hard work on this. We do appreciate it. Donna, I know especially, thank you for all your work with it. Scott, Mr. Hildebrand, thank you for all you've done to put this together, and you've taken everything that I know we've met and talked in our budget retreat, and put it in, and found every way you can to, to make it as useful as we can, and try to save money. And we appreciate all of you, you guys, and how much you work hard to save money. We know you do, in every way you can. And we certainly appreciate that, and the citizens of the City of Lenore do also. So we hope we'll get this thing finished at our budget retreat, our budget meeting this week, and get ready to move forward for early June to, to put it to rest for this, for this year.
Our staff involvement is so important, because those are the folks on the front lines. They see each day what, what needs to be done, and they also see how they can work together to get it done. And so we certainly appreciate that hard work from all the departments.
And you always, you don't come with waste. We always know that. You come with what you need to survive, basically. And if we can add to that, we're always glad to do that. So it's, it's good, and we appreciate how much you work with saving the dollars as much as you can. We do, we want you to know, we do appreciate that very much. All right, we will then take, we'll put all this together and work on it, and we'll move on now. We do not have, well, let's see, Mr. Perkins, you're the city attorney tonight.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good.
Thank goodness, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank goodness. I do have a couple of board appointments I would like to recommend to you tonight, when we brought these up at our May 1st City Council meeting. But for a term on the Lenore Business Advisory Board, I would recommend to you, this is Jennifer Indicott. Jennifer is a downtown business owner, and I think would be a great addition to, to that board. And all these appointments, I have discussed with our staff liaison involved in all these boards before we make any recommendations, to make sure that they're going to be good fits. I'll say that before we make them. But Jennifer on the Business Advisory Board, for our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Darrell Lippard, for a term with that. Many of you know Darrell. Darrell grew up here and has always been greatly involved in athletic programs here in Lenore and Caldwell County, and I think he would be, and he was really excited to be asked, or to be, that he could be a part of that when he turned in his application. And to our planning board, Mr. Larry Smith, as you know, Larry has also been very involved in our community, serves as a chaplain in our police department, but he also is very involved in, in our community. So I think those three would be great additions to our boards at this time. So I present that to you as a recommendation.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Thomas makes a motion to approve the recommendations as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Kerry James, we appreciate that very much, and we look forward to contacting, let, let these fine citizens know that we would appreciate what they're doing to be a part of our community. Any other reports or recommendations from our council members? If not, we stand adjourned.